Welcome, everybody. Today is our first meeting from our proposed summer break that started in the midst of July, so welcome back, council, staff, and the public. Looking to resume our regular meeting of council Monday, August 31st. With no additions to the agenda, looking for approval of the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Allos in favor? Opposed, motion carried. Public participation, this is your time, folks. Anybody that's in attendance with us tonight, if they have something they would like to make mention to council, we'd appreciate you coming forward to the microphone up there, clearly stating your name and address, please.
You go first. I got to finish that first, okay? My name is Kathryn Robertson, 395 Favreview Road. I would like first to thank you, say thank you to the city for hosting the Eats and Beats at the Beach event. It was a fun, family-friendly event. I hope that this becomes an annual event. Maybe the newly-formed Callwood Community Association would be able to assist with events such as this in the future. I am here tonight to make the council aware, I am against the proposed rezoning application for 3320 Machosen Road, 3319 Painter Road. It is a greedy proposal that does not benefit the cities, citizens of Callwood as a whole. I would like to remind the council that the bylaws for the planning of the city state that you are responsible for the promotion, health, safety, convenience, and welfare of the public, the prevention of the overcrowding of land, and the preservation of the amenities peculiar to any zone, the securing of adequate light, air, and access, the value of the land and nature of its present and prospective use and occupancy, the character of each zone, the character of the buildings already erected, and the peculiar suitability of the zone for particular uses, and the conservation of property values. The application for this development does nothing but lower the neighboring home's property values. It, in fact, it is unsafe, the fact that it is unsafe is of the gravest concern. If the council approves this application, it will put an undue strain on the portion of Machosen Road that fronts Sangster School. There already been approved developments such as Ocean Grove and Pacific Landing that will have large equipment turning right onto Machosen Road from Lagoon. In addition to the Royal Bay development that already go by. To add more equipment turning left onto Machosen Road from Painter Road without changing the curve at the intersection or installing a light is an accident waiting to happen. The fact that these were all approved without securing adequate infrastructure from the developers for the children that will be walking or bike-riding to and from the school is unconceivable. I would like to co-ute Pope Francis in his apology speech to the people of the Americas. Let us not be afraid to say it, we want change, real change, structural change. The unbridled capitalism across this planet has imposed the morality of profit at any price, with no concern for social exclusion or the destruction of nature. I hope that council will not have to make their own apologies for their decisions to the citizens of Callwood. Thank you.
My name's David Mann, I live at 3672 Seashell Place. One of my neighbors was supposed to speak to you tonight, but I'll do it in her place. We have been, this is the second time we've come, and I represent the Royal Bluffs Neighborhood Association. On April 27th of this year, a delegation came to the council meeting to bring to this council attention several problems with the house being built on the lot at 3672 Seashell Place. Most notably were the retaining wall that has been built to elevate the lot, which is in contravention of the official building scheme, the sewer and storm drain connection and clean-out damage below on the southwest corner of the lot, the compromise given to the owner of the lot to raise the main floor of the house, which does not follow the City of Callwood Development Variance Permit 0907. At the April 27th meeting, council asked for a report from the city about these problems. We also would like to know the status of this report and what will be done to ensure that all development variance permits are enforced and how the building scheme will be followed. In 2007, the committee studying the Development Variance Permit 0907 acknowledged that this DVP permitted reduced setbacks and increased building heights, but also stated that these concessions were given on the clear understanding that the building scheme would be enforced. Why has this changed? Many letters have been sent to the city and council expressing concern over mistakes made during the process in which the building permit for 3672 Seashell Place was issued. What assurances can this council give to the neighborhood association that this will not happen again? What is this council's plan to ensure that these mistakes will not happen again? How is this council planning to rectify the mistakes made? Again, we are asking you to help us preserve the quality and the character of our neighborhood. Thank you.
Any other members of the public?
My name is John Vinster, I live at 3340 Painter Road. I'd like to discuss the development, rezoning development at 3320 Machosen Road and 3319 Painter Road. I've followed this process rezoning from the start, this is the first one I've ever followed, and it's been a learning experience for me. I've heard a lot of concerns from the neighbors regarding the proposed development, concerns on density, on traffic, on safety, on parking. I've also heard from the council that this development is for the greater good of Callwood, although after repeated requests, we haven't heard what that greater good is. That greater good feeling certainly doesn't reside with the neighbors most closely affected by this, this proposed development, the ones, over 200 of them signed a petition against this level of density in their neighborhood. Most people that have spoken out against the development have made it clear that they're not opposed to development, but disagree with the proposed density of this development and all of the other problems that tag along with that density, as I mentioned before. It's said that large lots, like the ones that already exist on Painter Road, are no longer viable, and don't disagree with that, we understand that, but hope that some meeting in the middle could be done, you know, some concession to meet in the middle as far as density is concerned. So I'd just like to say that I hope the council votes against this proposed development and listens to the community and the people that have spoken up against it and voiced their concerns. This perhaps would encourage another development in its place at a lower density. Thank you.
Any further members of the public?
My name's Marlene Dayer, I live at 3311 Painter Road. I'm not against development, I'm against the size of the development. The two apartment buildings, two, one would be bearable to me, but the airflow from Machosen Road through Painter, and with the way the houses are going to be facing Painter, if they were laid out a different way, and I was thinking when all the heat we had and all the trees are down, you go over there, it's quite cool, but it's unbearable, it will be unbearable, people won't feel, they go out in their backyards and have a barbecue, it'll just be unbearable, and with those two apartment buildings there, the pollution factor from the cars coming out of the parking lot will also be something to consider. People will need air conditioning because it will be so hot, and also, if the houses, if they were put a different layout, they could have two parking lots, one for the, not parking lots, but entrances and exits, one at one end of the building for the parking lot, for the, pardon me, the apartment building, the cars coming and going at the far end, and cars coming and going from the houses at the other end, you would only have two entrances. And the concern is all those driveways coming in, this is ugly in my mind, it's not, and yes, it's the airflow, the quality of the air, the heat, with all the trees, and one of those trees on the corner is 20 feet around, and it serves a purpose, there's a lot more when trees are there, they serve a purpose for our environment, and they're clear-cutting everywhere. What is the result in the future? We won't know, but time will tell, and I hope you make a wise decision and listen to us.
Last and final time before we move on, any members of public? Thank you, folks, for standing up and giving your information. We will be moving on with our business of today. Mayor's message, I have a few points to note. Following up Kathryn on your accolades of the Eats and Beats, I want to congratulate staff and all those involved with ensuring that there was such a wonderful event there that far surpassed the expected attendance. So I think we've learned a lot going forward into what I hope will become an annual event down there. So we did hear from many people in the community locally as well in the other areas that attended, so thanks for everybody for making it so wonderful. There's also up on our website an opportunity for nominations for Medal of Good Citizenship. There is a new Medal of Good Citizenship that's being offered through the province. It will recognize individuals who, through exceptional long-term efforts, have made outstanding contributions to the well-being of their communities without expectation of remuneration or award. The nominations are open until Friday, September the 25th, and you can get that information on our website for anybody that might have, somebody they would consider putting forward. Another one is a message from Green Communities Committee, again honoring Callwood with their Climate Action Community branding for official websites and letterheads. Electronic file has been provided to the CAO and the 2014 Climate Action Window Decal. We did achieve a Level 2 recognition for measurement. And another one is a bit of information that came in through the summer while we were all off, is that the first of our two Community Works Funds, which is our gas tax fund, came through, I think, has it hit in yet? They said within a month or so.
Yes, we have received the.
There we go, so a total of 353,775 that was taken into consideration going forward when we made our budget, so money's in the bank, folks. The other couple of mentions is Counselor Chong, I want to thank her for taking an opportunity to ride in the Tour de Victoria this, what was it? Yeah, week ago or whatever, so she did the mid-stage ride in there throughout the community, so thank you on behalf of our parts. And Counselor Gordy Logan will be facing off at the Man Cup on Friday, front and center, so keep fingers away from that ball, that's rough sticks out there. There you go. Anyways, thanks, folks, for that. Anybody else with summer news around the table? Counselor Nalt was diving and hiking and whatever all over the place and has got lots of pictures to show. Counselor Day?
I can happily report that the West Shore Warriors Dragon Boat Team took a gold medal in the Silver Division at the Victoria Dragon Boat Festival this year, and they will be recruiting.
No, you're staying. Anyways, that's it for me for today. Looking to move on to item four, adoption of minutes of our regular meeting council July 13th. All those in favor? Opposed, motion carries? Looking for receipt for a number of minutes, Emergency Planning Committee, May 20th, Economic Development and Innovation, May 28th, Economic Development and Innovation, June 18th.
Second.
All those in favor? Opposed, motion carried? Nothing that is sitting there requiring council direction at this time. New Business, 6.1 Economic Development and Innovation, 6.1.1 Counselor Martin, recruitment of the Economic Development Officer.
Thank you, I'll defer to our CAO.
Madam Chair, at the last Economic Development Committee meeting, just last Thursday, there were a couple of motions that were passed and forwarded to council, they're on page 55 of your agenda. Subsequent to that meeting last Thursday, I have had further discussions with the union. At the Economic Development Committee meeting, we presented the draft job description, a draft letter of agreement with the union, as well as a draft posting. Subsequent to the Thursday meeting, I have reached an agreement in principle with the union on the wording of a letter of agreement. We've also reached agreement on the job description, there was never any issue with that. The letter of under, the letter of agreement with the union does address the issues of irregular hours, working on weekends occasionally, issues with respect to overtime, particularly the payment of overtime, the banking of hours, and approvals required in advance from the CAO with respect to issues of overtime and flexible hours. So given the fact that we have reached agreement with the union, and I have a level of comfort with respect to the matter, I do recommend that we proceed with posting. I have dropped on your table, and this was presented to the Economic Development Committee, a draft posting for the Economic Development Officer position. Welcome any comments you may have at any time, but basically, the motion that I'm recommending now is that we proceed with posting the position.
So moved.
Secondor, please.
Second.
Discussion, council? Call the question, alls in favor? Opposed, motion carried? 6.1.2 Community Economic Profile Update.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Basically, the Economic Development Committee has been working on and has been encouraging staff to create a community economic profile that clearly describes the city's competitive advantages for future residents, workers, businesses, investors. Basically, Sandra had shown us a website that they are working on that will run parallel to the city website, which will be strictly around economic development and allowing future businesses to sort of find stats and all that kind of stuff, resources. We're hoping to also have the ability to offer some supports through that website and through our staffing, you know, around if people are looking for a specific location to do business in that within the municipality. It was basically, it's moved, and I will so move, that the Economic Development and Innovation Committee recommends to council that staff proceed with the following steps towards the creation of a community economic profile. One, carry out a literature review of award-winning economic development websites and materials to outline information required, and begin cross-referencing with information presented in Callwood's Economic Development Strategic Plan. And two, work closely with the city's web development team at Up &amp; Up Studios to add this web component to the city's existing website to create a professional, easy-to-use and easy-to-maintain sub-website.
Secondor, please.
Second.
Comments, questions from council? Counselor Nalt?
Yes, just a quick question to our economic people. There is no financial implication written into this recommendation, I was wondering what the expected costs of this were and whether they were included in our 2015 budget.
My understanding is we do have money in the budget, and that Sandra will actually be getting quotes and then bringing it back to council, so that that will actually have some cost ideas.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Counselor Day?
Yeah, my question was along the lines of Counselor Nalt in regard to the cost for working with Up &amp; Up, so I look forward to the report coming forward.
And we did, and I apologize, maybe Andrea knows it, but we do have, we built that into the budget, but I'm not, to be honest, I'm drawing a blank on what that actual amount was. I believe it might have been 8,000 for some reason, but I could be completely wrong.
I do know, I don't have the exact figures here, but I do know that we have a number of items in the budget that have not yet been expanded on our project list, and I believe that we definitely have money available.
Yeah, and it's my understanding too that Sandra will not bring to us anything that's above and beyond what council had approved through the budget, so we'll, council will still see how much it's going to cost, but she at least has a benchmark or parameters to work around from a cost standpoint.
Anything else? Call the question, alls in favor? Opposed, motion carried? Item 6.1.3 Re-Callwood Wayfinding.
Thank you, I wish Sandra was here, she could talk on this better, but I'll try and do the best I can. Basically, one of the things we're looking at from an economic development standpoint is being more consistent with our signage and also cleaning it up, also moving away from negative messaging towards doing something more positive, so like encouraging people to tell them where to park, not where not to park, and along those lines. She'll be bringing, she'll be bringing that to future, actually probably through parks, some of that will be coming, but it was moved that we did want to start moving towards getting some of the signage fixed, so that the, so it was moved, and I will so move, that the Economic Development and Innovation Committee recommended council that the following steps be approved for the Callwood Wayfinding Project. First, waterfront signs. Consult with council and key stakeholders regarding waterfront signage as appropriate, including Elsie, First Nations, and others. Proceed with design and installation plans, so basically that is what we're saying there is that we'll start the process, not that we finished it. Two, produce and install a wayfinding sign on the Old Island Highway directing people down Ocean Boulevard to the waterfront, as well as Suk and Machosen Road. Sandra actually already has the sign designed, and it's gorgeous, it's completely different than what your first appropriate. If you do look into the Economic Development Committee, you'll probably see the sign there. If not, then you could probably reach out to Sandra and she can give you an example of what that sign will look like. As I said, it looks really good. Galloping Goose, produce and install wayfinding signs directing people to our major entrances to the Galloping Goose Regional Trail in Callwood. And then Points of Interest, produce and install wayfinding signs directing visitors to sites like Hatley Castle and Gardens, Fort Rod Hill, Fiskard Lighthouse, and St. John's, the Baptist Church. And then finally, Parks and Trails, a plan will develop for signage directing visitors to major parks in the city.
Secondor, please.
Second.
Counselor Day?
Thank you, just signage in our parks has been on our radar at the Parks and Recreation Committee for many years, and I think it's important that it doesn't get lost in, I realize there's a big push towards the economic development, which is excellent, but as we identify and direct people to our parks, I think it's very important that we develop signage within our parks so that you can find where you are, identify your location in case there is an emergency, et cetera. And I just want to put that on the radar too, please.
Anyone else? Call the question, alls in favor? Opposed, motion carried? Next item. Moving on, Planning and Land Use Committee, 6.2.1 Memo, Planning Department, additional information on regarding amenity contributions associated with rezoning application. Staff?
Sorry, before, before, I will excuse myself due to a possible conflict of interest. It's West Shore Park and Rec. Is it, is it not West Shore Park and Rec? Are we not on this one yet? Oh, is it Painter Road, sorry. Sorry, what number is that? 60?
That's 70.
Well, that's page 61.
I don't know.
Sorry. Uh, what?
No, we're not on Park and Rec, we're on Planning.
But you skipped over this, then.
Wait a minute, not on my, not on my.
Do we, do we have a 6.2, Merton?
I have.
Oh, you must have got taken off. Did 6.2 get taken off?
Yes.
Oh, okay. It did not get taken off of my agenda.
It's on his paper one.
That's right.
Okay, so we got.
Then I want to excuse myself.
Counselor Merton, you had the wrong agenda.
Yep.
So 6.2, Planning and Land Use, you can stay.
Okay.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Before you, is a memorandum concerning the rezoning application at 3319 Painter Road and 3320 Machosen Road from R1 Residential 1 Zone and P2 Community Institutional Zone to a comprehensive development zone allowing for two 18-unit apartment complexes and nine small-lot, single-family dwellings. The memo outlines the applicant's response to outstanding items from two Planning and Land Use Committee meetings, as well as a council meeting, as follows. Firstly, at the Planning and Land Use Committee meeting dated April 7th, 2015, requests to address the inclusion of a totlot playground and landscape strip and privacy fence around the proposed parking area were made. These requests were brought up at the committee as part of a defeated motion, but despite this, the applicants have offered to make the commitments as part of the Section 219 Development Agreement to include both a totlot and screening for the parking area. Secondly, at the Planning and Land Use Committee meeting of May 15th, 2015, recommendations to prohibit secondary suites and explore potential developer contributions for off-site road improvements and speed reduction measures on Tipton Avenue and Owens Road were made. These recommendations were subsequently accepted by council, and in response, the applicants have agreed to include a prohibition of secondary suites in the development agreement, as well as to provide $6,000 to be made available for local implementation of street calming Lastly, at the meeting of May 25th, 2015, council resolved to address onsite curb types and directed staff to explore the possibility of a per-unit contribution to the city's beautification reserve fund for the planting of off-site trees. In response, the applicants have agreed to the request for onsite, non-mountable curbing only, and to contribute $300 per unit in excess of two units to the city's beautification fund, which would then be available for off-site tree planting. Staff recommend that these changes be enshrined in the proposed development agreement and within the proposed rezoning bylaw as appropriate. It should be noted that these changes have been included in the draft bylaw to be given consideration prior to first reading and second reading in Section 7.4 of tonight's agenda. Staff also recommend that council consider directing staff to prepare a bylaw to institute a statutory reserve fund for street calming. Thank you.
Thank you, Your Worship, I will move the recommendation, and if I could speak, please.
Secondor?
Second motion.
Counselor Logan?
Thank you, Your Worship. Those that have been following this application know that I do support it, and I won't rehash the reasons why I do support it, but I do want to say that the changes that are reflected in this application are as a result of the constructive input that both committee and council received throughout the process. And the director had pointed to a few items, such as the prohibition of secondary suites, the provision of a play area, one was the reduction of the amount of driveways, and judging by the plan that's in our package, that has been achieved. And judging by the plan that's in our package, that has been achieved. There was a desire both on the city's part and the neighborhood to move the pedestrian connection that was between Painter and Machosen, uh, to increase the safety of pedestrians that want to cross the site and those parents that are taking their kids to Sangster Elementary as an example. And furthermore, to make sure it's raised so it provides a, an extra added level of protection. Residents also suggested and requested, uh, as the director had pointed out, uh, a landscape screen and decorative fence and, um, a contribution to, um, some traffic calming ideas. I understand that discussion is ongoing with, with planning and engineering. So there has been, um, that move based on what the neighborhood has said, um, during meetings. So, um, I think we should recognize as a city that, um, that the applicant has made an effort to, um, try to mitigate and minimize, um, and improve certainly the, uh, the issues that, uh, that have been brought up. And, uh, so, you know, I think after the discussion that we've had, uh, both at this table and committee, that this is probably an even better, uh, project. And so I, I do thank you and, uh, and, uh, I will be supporting this going forward. Thank you.
Any other members of council? Councilor Day?
Thank you. I do appreciate that a number of, um, uh, concessions have been made to address issues raised by the public. Uh, however, it, it, um, in total, uh, the, uh, total contributions known at this time are still, um, under, uh, the twenty thousand dollar mark for, for contributions, uh, to the city. And more than two hundred residents have signed a petition, uh, stating that they have concerns with the density, um, of this, uh, development. Uh, so I recognize that there has been considerable work done by the developer to try to, um, meet in the middle, uh, in some regards. Uh, however, I do also see that it still does not represent a development that the residents of that area are comfortable with. And for that reason, I will not be supporting it.
Any other member? Councilor Nalt? And then Councilor Martin?
Yes, I will be supporting these changes. They are an improvement to the existing development proposal. And my discussion on the actual development proposal will wait for first and second reading.
Councilor Martin?
Thank you. Uh, talking about this specifically and talking to some residents, one of the comments, and this is directed to our Director of Planning, uh, was that, uh, the totlot was basically what people, I've heard, is that they would prefer to actually have parking spots in there versus totlot. Um, and that, that we actually lost parking spots by putting the totlot in. And, and I guess I would like some clarification on that. Did we lose parking spots and would it be more advantageous for us to actually not have a totlot and actually have parking spots? So that, that people are not parking on the road?
To answer the question through the chair, the, the site plan was looked at in totality in terms of where best a, a playground could be incorporated. And I can't say actually off the top of my head whether it meant that there were some parking spaces eliminated. I would hazard a guess that there could be potential for one or two additional spots if, if a playground wasn't part of the plan. But it was, uh, looked at as a, a total package and I, I can't say whether there was exactly, um, a number of spots deleted. I would just add that our, our officially plan does call for, uh, play areas to be incorporated in these kinds of developments. And in particular, um, there's certain language to suggest that that should be prioritized over parking, surface parking.
And just a follow-up?
Hello?
Uh, do we really feel it's necessary to have a totlot with a school right across the street? Like, I guess that, like, I just don't want it to be repetitive if, if that lot's not, if that playground's not gonna actually get used 'cause kids are gonna walk over and use Sangsters. Is there really a point of having a, uh, a, a totlot on the, on the property or not? And again, these are questions I'm getting from residents, hence the reason I'm just asking.
Well, if you're asking my professional opinion, I, I would say that yes, it's better to have, um, play spaces as close to people live as possible. Um, that's coming from both as a professional planner, as a father of two toddlers. Um, and there has been conflict between residential users of school playgrounds and the, the schools themselves. Uh, I know that School District sixty-two has, has dealt, faced with that, uh, has dealt with that in the past. So there are some, you know, issues that could be ameliorated through having a, an onsite playground.
One final follow-up. Uh, my final question is, is this a public totlot that anyone within Callwood would have an opportunity to utilize? Or is this for the property?
The developers have, uh, proposed it as a publicly accessible totlot. If council wanted to make sure that it was publicly accessible, I would suggest that a statutory right-of-way be drafted. That has been, um, uh, suggested as the way that the pathway through the site is maintained for the public. Uh, and it would be an extension of the same thinking to, uh, to have a, um, public access, uh, right to the totlot.
And if, if the totlot is public, how, how would it be maintained? Financially?
We'd have to look at that, uh, under the current scenario, it would be maintained by the owners of the, uh, development. Uh, if there was a statutory right-of-way, I'd have to talk to my colleagues in, um, Engineering and Finance to look at how that would be, uh, you know, dealt with.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Call the question on this recommendation, all those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries? Um, item, folks, six point two point two memo, again, Director of Planning, bylaw number one five nine oh. Um, amendment number one four six.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. As council is aware, an omnibus amendment to bylaw was initiated at the beginning of the summer to bring about a series of miscellaneous, miscellaneous improvements to the land use bylaw. Since that time, staff have identified additional amendments to land use bylaw concerning improvements to the definition of personal services and associated language that council may wish to consider at this time. The proposed new bylaw amendments would allow the city to more effectively regulate businesses, business activities that fall under the category of personal services and thereby prevent potential land use conflicts in the community. Uh, I'd just like to point out, uh, that there is a typo in the report. The headers on pages two and three should not reference, uh, Ocean Grove, that was a typo. Therefore, uh, staff recommend that council receive this memorandum for information and give consideration to amending the in-stream land use bylaw omnibus amendment number fifteen ninety, which is being given second reading to include said improvements. I'd just like to add, if council wishes to proceed with the amended, the amendments as proposed, a motion to rescind second reading followed by a motion to amend the bylaw number fifteen ninety and a second reading as amended, amended is required at subsection seven point six of the bylaw section of tonight's agenda. Thank you.
Planning?
Move the recommendation?
Second. Good, thank you, folks. Um, comments, questions? So it is, the recommendation is just the first section, folks. Just to reiterate, it's that council received the staff report titled, "Proposed Amendments to Omnibus Bylaw Number One Five Nine Oh" and dated August twenty-sixth for information. The rest of it will be taken care of later in the bylaws. Uh, any question, comments? Call the question, all those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries? Uh, six point two point three memo, again, Director of Planning, Ocean Grove Bylaw Number One Five Six Four. Uh, bylaw showing amendments for R Z fourteen zero zero three.
Madam Mayor, I must excuse myself for conflict as I live there.
Councilor Trace? We'll call you back.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, I'd like to start off with, uh, two points of clarification. Uh, the version of, um, bylaw number fifteen sixty-four attached to the memo, uh, includes two maps. Uh, the first one is the original map, which, uh, should show, um, a red line running through it. Uh, the second map shows the, the bylaw map as amended by council, um, and this replaces the, uh, the first map. Secondly, the, um, the text in the text box in the top right corner of bylaw number fifteen sixty-four on page hundred and twenty-one of the agenda, uh, should be disregarded as it does not reflect the current status of the bylaw. Uh, the text box should have wording as per the recommendation in the, uh, staff report. At their, um, regular meeting on April thirteenth, two thousand and fifteen, council gave third reading to an amended bylaw, number fifteen sixty-four with respect to the zoning regulations for the Ocean Grove development. The three amendments that were made are as follows. That the maximum number of, uh, the, the maximum permitted number of single-family dwellings and duplex units uh, be reduced from eighty-five to twen, to twenty. Uh, that Schedule One, being the subject property map of bylaw number fifteen sixty-four, uh, be amended to remove any reference to the road network within the boundaries of the subject property. And that section ten point eleven point ten three of the comprehensive development CD six zone, Ocean Grove, be amended by removing the reference to Area Seven and to read as follows. The minimum lot size that may be created by subdivision in Area Eight is three hundred square meters. The last amendment that was made removed the reference to Area Seven from the regulations regarding subdivision within the Ocean Grove development. Staff are of the understanding that it was council's intent to amend bylaw number fifteen sixty-four to reduce the maximum number of single-family dwellings and duplex units buildable in a CD six zone from eighty-five to twenty and prohibit single-family dwellings in Area Seven. However, the amendments do not have the effect of restricting said dwelling types in Area Seven as the list of permitted uses for that area still include detached dwellings, also known as single-family dwellings. Furthermore, by deleting the reference to Area Seven under the subdivision regulations, the bylaw currently does not have a minimum lot size for subdivision in that area. If council wishes to proceed with a new amendment that removes detached dwellings and duplexes from the list of permitted uses in Area Seven, uh, the process will need to revert to an amended second reading stage and a second public hearing will need to be held. Staff recommend that council rescind third reading of bylaw number fifteen sixty-four and amend the bylaw by simply reinserting the reference to Area Seven under the subdivision regulations only. This would not prohibit detached dwellings or duplexes from being created in that area. However, the maximum number of detached dwellings and duplexes that will be permitted in Area Seven and Eight would still be limited to twenty units. This amendment would not necessitate a second public hearing. Also, if I could bring council's attention to staff's recommendation in the report. Uh, the recommendation in the report will apply at the bylaw section of the agenda for tonight. At this time, staff recommend that council receive the report for information only. If council wishes to proceed with the amendment as proposed, a motion to rescind, um, third reading followed by a motion to amend bylaw number fifteen sixty-four and a third reading as amended is required, um, as subsection seven point five in the bylaw section of, uh, tonight's agenda. Thank you.
Can I just get a clarification? Uh, Efe, can you please clarify? You, you said, you said your recommendation was to receive. And then, and then when do you want us to actually address the recommendation? Or when were you planning on bringing it back if we only received it tonight? In, in by, but then we need to make the recommendation though?
No, you would rescind, you would rescind the bylaw.
Yeah, but he's just.
Make the amendment.
But he's recommending that we just receive it tonight?
Receive this report.
Right.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah.
So we don't make a recommendation now?
No, just, just to receive.
Okay, got it. Thank you. Got it.
So I'm looking for motion to recieve.
I'll move for receipt. All right, second. Whatever.
Any further questions on that or clarifications before we get down in there? We can ask more later. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried? Uh, can somebody grab Councilor Trace for me? And we will look to six point two point four memorandum, again, Director of Planning, amenity contributions for firefighter high-rise training.
Thank you, Worship. Before you, is a memorandum concerning a change in wording, uh, of the amenity contributions specific to the firefighter high-rise train, building training fund. Staff had previously proposed wording for amenity contributions within the recommendations of the staff report dated June sixteenth, two thousand and fifteen, which addressed contributions to a high-rise, a firefighter high-rise building training fund. However, upon advice of the municipal solicitor, staff recommend the wording of the amenity contribution be revised as follows. One hundred and six dollars per dwelling unit in excess of two units towards the training of firefighters and the use of equipment or facilities acquired with the funds from the reserve account. Staff recommend that proposed wording be reflected in the draft bylaw for the in-progress text amendment to the Comprehensive Development fifteen zone. Thank you.
The mover and the shaker, please?
I'll, uh, move it, Your Worship.
Second.
Discussion, council? Councilor Logan?
Thank you, Worship. Uh, I am totally in favor of this. Um, when the original wording came about, it was, uh, in the day when we thought we were going to have some substantially higher buildings than what are being built now. Um, so I think the focus, now the shift to have these contributions go towards equipment or facilities is most appropriate because the current wording is quite restrictive. Um, and knowing that, uh, the type of development that is occurring, uh, around the Callwood Corner area may necessitate, uh, a second station in order to, um, maintain a level of service in that area as traffic becomes an issue. So this change will enable, uh, the contribution towards, uh, another facility or equipment to be able to serve, uh, different reaches of the city. It's a good, it's a good change.
Any other members of council? Call the question, all those in favor? Opposed? Motion carried? Uh, Transportation and Public Infrastructure, report, city engineer on the I-Lot Place sewer connections?
Uh, this matter is one of the loose ends remaining from the two thousand and eleven sewer settlement. Uh, the city agreed as part of that settlement to provide some assistance to certain property owners on I-Lot Place. Um, and those are highlighted in salmon pink on the attachment. And on Matilda Drive, and that's highlighted in blue, um, at the time when they have to connect to sewers. Um, the part of the agreement that was relevant to I-Lot, uh, is summarized in the report as, uh, city agreed to provide, uh, the following things for the benefit of the I-Lot properties when they wish to or must connect to sewers, which is A, a sewage pump for each property, complete with tank, pump, controls, but not installation or maintenance, and piping as required to connect the existing properties to, uh, the existing sewer to the property line of each property. And for the, uh, properties on Matilda, it was one sewage pump serviced all of the lots there and also piping as required. The owners of the lot on I-Lot, uh, that currently serves as a sewage disposal field, um, have covenants that allow them to, uh, uh, once municipal sewers are available in the area to say, okay, yeah, I want my lot back and you have to connect to the sewers. And they've initiated that process. The, the pumps are needed because the, the properties currently are designed to drain down, drain down to Matilda and there's no existing pump station there. Um, the owners of the other properties did suggest building a pump station there and the city did try to enter into an agreement where they would pay a portion of the cost and, uh, the city would build the pump station. Um, but they were unable to raise that cost. So without, uh, the idea of, um, building the pump station at Matilda, we came up with a, another idea that much, might, uh, is expected to still satisfy the, uh, the residents and their desire not to have individual pumps. Um, but is, uh, requires a much smaller pump, um, because the pump will be up on the step right-of-way through the old sewage treatment lot or existing sewage treatment lot. And that is effectively pumping downhill and then up again, so it doesn't require as much force. Whereas a pump station on Matilda is pumping purely up. Um, the ground there is much better in that, uh, we're not anticipating encountering the water table. Whereas the water table on Matilda is very near the surface. Um, and the total net cost of installation is quite competitive, uh, compared to other. Um, and the total net cost of installation is quite competitive, uh, compared to other options. And, uh, the residents, of course, avoid what they're trying to avoid, which is excavation on their own properties, excavation in the road, digging up driveways, uh, landscaping, et cetera. So I've laid out the, the various options, um, uh, and these are, these were content, uh, costed in the financial implications, uh, below, and I've gone into some detail about why, um, each, uh, option is, uh, is recommended or not recommended. And, um, the, uh, gross cost of option five, which is the new option, build the pump station on the stat right-of-way on that, uh, lot, um, on I-Lot Place that's used for sewage treatment, is, um, anticipated to be a hundred thousand dollars, uh, which is, um, sixteen thousand dollars more than option two, um, and yet of, uh, similar benefit to the city. So the suggestion is that we ask the residents to contribute sixteen thousand towards that solution, um, so that they get a solution that benefits them and the city doesn't pay any more cost. Uh, the very cheap option of using the existing pumps that have been stored for about ten years is not recommended because we anticipate, uh, um, risks from using pumps that have been sitting for that long. We wouldn't be able to provide guarantees. Um, and yet, uh, the residents would be, uh, quite right to, um, assume that, uh, under the agreement, they'd be getting new pumps. Um, and there's a, there's a conflict there which could result in the city being liable for any failure of the pumps. So the current budget includes a, uh, hundred and seventeen thousand dollar contribution to this project from sewer reserves and fifty thousand dollars from contributions from others. That's from the residents. Um, we would expect with the option five, the actual expenditures to be, um, uh, fifty thousand dollars from sewer reserves and sixteen thousand from contributions from others in two thousand and fifteen, uh, to deal with the I-Lot situation and a further thirty-four thousand to deal with Matilda properties later. Um, and, uh, the total cost of the sewer reserves, um, would be, uh, thr- thirty-three thousand five hundred and twenty dollars cheaper than, uh, the budget. Uh, we've discussed this proposal with the city solicitors, uh, and they've approved it. Um, and, uh, subject to council, um, agreeing to proceed with option five, we would communicate with the strata and, uh, um, and the parties to the original agreement, um, uh, in accordance with the city solicitor's instructions, uh, to ensure that everybody's agreed there's no breach of the agreement. And council's decision would be communicated to all the owners of the lots on I-Lot Place and the signatories to the agreement. So the recommendation is that council offered to provide, install, and maintain a city-owned sewer pump in the sewer statutory right-of-way on Lot Seven on I-Lot Place to service all of the property ons- on I-Lot Place in place of the servicing method described in the city's agreement with the Ridley Organization, providing that the strata council agrees to pay sixteen dol- a thousand dollars towards the pump station. Thank you.
Counselor Martin.
Thank you. Uh, gee, sewers. I love sewers. Uh, I, I've got a couple of questions and so it basically focused completely on option five, so let's forget about one through four. You don't have to address those. Uh, option five, uh, it was my understanding, though, part of the pressure that I-Lot had was that the Ridley's wanted, uh, that one lot back so that they could actually build on it. So if we're gonna put a pump station on, on that, are they still going to be able to build? And does that meet the Ridley's needs of wanting to get that lot back?
Yeah, absolutely. The, the pump station would go in the statutory right-of-way. It would be just a manhole essentially.
Oh, okay.
And there's already manholes in there and they, they can't build on the stat right-of-way.
Okay. And the, the second question I have is, does this change at all with Pacific Landing? And with, is Pacific Landing builds out, are they planning on going up Heatherbell, uh, cons- uh, like for sewers? Or how, how will that development? And would it be advantageous for the city to wait until Pacific Landing went on and then allowed I-Lot to hook into the sewer line coming down Heatherbell?
I can't see any advantage to that. Um, there already is a pressure line that goes from the locat- well, within, uh, about ten or twelve feet of the location. We want to build the sewage treatment, uh, the sewage pump station all the way to, um, the manhole on Portsmouth. So that line's already in place.
Okay.
If we go the other way, we've got to dig up I-Lot Place and lay a new line. It doesn't seem worth inco- incurring that cost.
Okay. Thank you. I'm done.
Counselor.
I guess the one thing missing from the recommendation is if the agreement was between the city and the Ridley Corporation, uh, does not the Ridley Corporation have to agree with this solution before we do it? Because this is not exactly what they agreed to.
Yes, but I can't take that to them until you agree to te- that I should. The recommendation is for an offer, not, uh, to proceed.
Yeah, I would like to see that, uh, reference to the agreement, uh, Ridley Organization agreeing to this in, in there. It just says, "We offer." It doesn't say, "We achieve agreement with the Ridley Corporation." And I think that's crucial to the, uh, proposal as, as before us because this is not verbatim what was agreed to in the first place.
Absolutely. And if I, if there is no agreement, I'll be back here, um, suggesting we revert to precisely what's in the agreement.
Counselor Chung.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm just wondering, before we possibly rule out the stored pumps, if it's worthwhile, if the city has asked the manufacturers of the pumps, if it's possible to buy extended warranty on those pumps?
It would have been possible about five years ago. But they, uh, you have to buy it, uh, before the end of the original warranty, which is five years, and we're well beyond that now.
Uh, Counselor Day.
Thank you. On the map depicting, um, the different properties, there is shown, uh, a forced main, uh, coming down, uh, through the blue property, um, to, um, Matilda Drive. Uh, if, uh, an al- one of the alternates are, is chosen, will that forced main, uh, not be required then? So no pump station on Matilda means no forced main in that area?
No, the, the, um, pump station would go roughly where it says Package Treatment Plant on the map.
Okay, yeah.
And then it would actually pump down that forced main.
So the line would still exist. Under all of these options, the lines are all in the same places?
Yeah, yeah.
And, um, for those pumps that we have in storage, um, is there a residual value for them? Could they be used, for example, to address Triangle Mountain's drain- drainage issues or other areas where we might need to pump water?
Um, they could be, but it's, um, it's unlikely to be advantageous to use a number of small pumps where you'd probably need a large pump.
Okay.
Um, but, uh, probably at this stage, uh, I'll be bringing forward a suggestion that we sell those pumps for whatever we can get for them, as is where is.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
I guess I, I could add that, um, I, I think that the, um, idea of building the pump station on the sewer right-of-way, uh, being as we could get it at relatively the same price as, uh, buying new pumps and putting the pressure pipe into the gravity line, uh, option two on the, um, um, I think that that has potentially less conflict, so I would like to put forward as a suggestion to council that that's an option we explore.
I'm sorry, Cynthia, which, which option?
Option four.
You have option.
Oh, sorry, option five.
So are you, uh, motioning the recommendation?
I am.
Which says five? Did I need a second, or please?
Second.
Uh, any further discussion? Uh, to staff, uh, Counselor Noel, sorry?
I would still like to see in the recommendation an amendment that says, at the last line, provided that the strata council agrees to pay sixteen thousand toward the pump station, and we have written agreement from the Ridley Corporation that this meets the spirit of the original deal.
Um, I would accept that as a friendly amendment.
Okay, so I, yeah, I'm reading it just a little bit different because it does speak to the in-place of the serving method described at the city's agreement with the Ridley Organization. So there would have to be conversation for sure in there, but we can take that. Um, I have a question to staff. Uh, these folks on I-Lot will still be paying a hookup fee, though. Yes, no?
Um, they will pay everything except the sewer enhancement fee. They were specifically, um, excluded from that in the agreement.
In the agreement, okay. All right. Um, any other questions? And we have that as a friendly amendment on there so that we're clear. Um, called question, then all those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries? Uh, moving then into item number seven, seven point one, bylaw number one five eight zero. Final reading for Callwood Main Sewer Local Area Service Bylaw Establishment and Loan Authorization, five nine eight, two thousand and one, amendment number thirty-one. We were provided in handouts, folks, the, um, uh, information with the, the maps on the back, so, um, if you need to refer to that, you certainly may. Um, looking for final.
Move final.
Second.
All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carried? Um, one five eight six, final reading again, Callwood Main Sewer Local Area Service Bylaw Establishment and Loan Authorization, number five nine eight, two thousand and one, amendment number thirty-three.
Move final.
All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carried? Bylaw number one five eight seven, final reading, Callwood Central Sewer Local Area Service Establishment and Loan Authorization, bylaw number four eight zero, nineteen ninety-nine, amendment number five.
Move final.
Second.
All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carried? Number one five eight three, first and second readings, uh, Callwood Land Use Bylaw, number one five one, nineteen eighty-nine, amendment number one four five, Machosen Road, thirty-three twenty, Machosen Road, and thirty-three nineteen, Painter Road.
Move introduction.
Second.
All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carried? Second?
Move second.
Discussion?
So, um, I'm confused, uh, by this bylaw because we had the report saying that we, oh, sorry, I'm on the wrong bylaw. That's why. Okay, I know where we are now. Are we okay?
Yeah.
Uh, any further discussion? Counselor Noel?
Uh, yes, I will be opposing this, uh, as the neighbors have made very clear, it's not supported in the neighborhood. My feeling is it's overcrowded, there is too much density, it's not consistent with the neighborhood, and represents a major departure from existing form and character. It's not wanted by the neighborhood, and I'm not convinced that this development has any benefit whatsoever to the city.
Any other, Counselor Day?
I'll make my comments at the right time and about the right thing. Um, I would like to express, uh, appreciation that the developer has made efforts to reduce the number of driveways coming on to, uh, Painter Road. Um, they have managed to reduce that by two, uh, which is good. Um, uh, however, I still feel that they have overall, um, only made changes, um, that, that are fairly minor in nature. They haven't addressed the, the major issues that were brought forward by the residents, uh, living in the neighborhood. Putting, uh, a high density into an existing, uh, older neighborhood is, um, difficult at best, uh, and I don't feel that the, the community, uh, is accepting of it, and I don't feel that any of the people who originally signed that petition have had, no, no one has expressed to me that they have changed their minds about how they feel about the project in that time, so I won't be supporting it.
Any other members? Counselor Martin?
Thank you. Uh, I've spoken to a lot of residents as well, and obviously there is a lot of concern regarding, uh, this development. I want to, uh, share a couple of things, though, uh, because I think it's important and residents have asked, uh, where the value for greater Callwood is with this, and I think it's important for people to understand, uh, where I'm coming from with some of this. Uh, one is rental units. Rental units are incredibly important to a community and the survival of a community. Um, if you look at the rental units on Whale right now, there's fifty people who are waiting for a rental unit. There was a documentary on CBC, uh, talking about, uh, empty nesters who no longer have that ability to retire in their own community because they have to sell their home and they don't have, there's no rentals in their own community, and so they end up having to leave their community because they have to sell their homes. So there is value to having, uh, rental units within our community, uh, and so that, that's one of the values. Uh, the other thing that's important for residents to also understand is that there has been modifications to this plan, and I think there will continue to be modifications. I think one of the things that residents don't recognize is that the way our OCP reads right now is, is that should be first-floor commercial, all in that. And, um, that was one of the first decisions that was made, that, that we were not going to have first-floor commercial there because we didn't think it fit form. Uh, and that, um, and I, and I think council has been receptive to understanding that the community is looking for something, um, that fits their neighborhood. So I think there has been modifications. I'm gonna be voting in favor of this, uh, because I think it's important that, that we continue to listen and we continue to go to public hearing and hear what people have to say about this specific bylaw, and, and I'm, I'm still very open to, to seeing how we can address this. However, saying all that, uh, I think we have to understand that, that we have to find some sort of compromise, and I've heard people say they're not against development, they're just against the specific development and the, the specific densities. But when I've asked sp- sp- excuse me, specifically, what would satisfy you? Nobody's given me an exact answer. Uh, I'm not hearing what should be there. I'm not. I, I, I've heard some people tell me one building instead of two, some people have said get rid of the nine driveways, some people have said I'm comfortable with the driveways, but I'm concerned about X. There seems to be a whole bunch of things, and I think that this still needs to, to be discussed, and, and as we move forward, hopefully we find a plan that, that everybody can be happy with, but I'm quite happy to support this moving forward.
Thank you. Well, I wasn't gonna say anything, but I, you know, I just wanna reiterate, uh, why I'm supporting this particular project, and, um, you know, I, I, I agree it's a change. And, uh, as I mentioned before, it's, uh, the same type of, uh, development that, in, in the neighborhood that I live in that has provided some excitement and vibrancy because there are different types of housing. And in fact, this brings an added level because, as Counselor Martin had stated, it provides rental housing, and, uh, this is not a ghetto that is being constructed. This is decent, uh, rental housing that, um, I think, uh, where neighbors will, um, be friendly to one another, invite each other, uh, to, to have a coffee. It, um, it will also provide the infrastructure, uh, in the neighborhood that will make it safer. There are no sidewalks there right now, and so this will provide sidewalks, period. My kids go to school in the neighborhood, they're, one's going to Dunsmere, so I do have a vested interest to make sure that safety is paramount. All right? So, um, and, and the other thing I want to say is, uh, that traffic from this development will not have an appreciable effect on the neighborhood. Um, I, I think when you look at the development down the road, Royal Bay perhaps, that will have an impact on traffic, but this one development will not bring that neighborhood to a standstill, period. Um, and, uh, again, you can go to other neighborhoods, and, and I'm not saying I don't appreciate, uh, um, uh, the perceived fear that's, that's out there, and, and I, I do appreciate that because of, of the nature of the change, but my experience over the years and in the neigh- But my experience over the years, and in the neighborhood that I live in, it just does not hold any water. It hasn't materialized. So I think this is a benefit. It's a change. And it's also a scaled-down version of the project that was originally proposed. The neighborhood is changing, and we can't construct and keep within the form and character of the neighborhood because we're not building nineteen-sixties and seventies homes anymore. The neighborhood is changing, and this, you'll see it all around. And I think we've been sensitive enough to recognize that this brings some positives, although some changes, and it will be an asset once it's constructed, so I will be supporting it.
Anyone else? Call the question, then. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Item number seven point five, bylaw number one five six four. This is the one to make that amendment on, so we look to rescinding third reading and motion to amend, and then third reading as amended.
Madam Mayor, I have to excuse myself.
I'll move that we rescind third reading. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carried.
I'll move that we amend third reading as recommended in the staff report.
Second.
Discussion, anyone? Counselor Nolte?
I guess the question I have is, there's two ways to go about this. One is the staff recommendation. The other way is if the intent of the original motion was to not allow single-family detached dwellings in Area Eight, then we could alter the use of Area Eight to remove duplexes and detached single families and add a minimum area of something like point-two hectares to that lot, to that area description. So I'm just curious as to what, I believe Counselor Martin was the original mover of those amendments, if his intent was to exclude single-family from that area, or whether it was just to limit the number to twenty.
Would you like me to answer? My initial was to limit in section Area Seven, I thought. I'm confused about Area Eight. I don't know what Area Eight is.
If I may, Area Eight is the one immediately north, and under the allowed uses of Area Eight, duplexes and single-family detached housing are allowed with a minimum lot size of three hundred meters squared, which would allow them to split their twenty units all across Area Seven and Eight, which, it's still only twenty units, it's not a major change. But if the intent was to exclude single-family from that area, then my other suggestions would come to play.
Any others?
I'll just say that my intention all along in supporting the amendments has been to ensure that the wording is consistent with what was presented to the public on the maps. So that is why I'm supporting this going forward, so that people get, what they see is what they get.
Any further comments? Call the question, all those in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. We're all done on that one? Second reading? And do we now need second reading as amended? Marcy? We've done second as amended, then?
Yeah, I think you amended that. Move third reading.
Second.
Whoa, 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 that's not what it says. It says rescind second, motion to amend, and then second reading as amended.
It says third reading as amended.
Well, then, I've got an.
Well, it says motion to amend three, second reading as amended.
No, yeah, that's just one, one, two, three. One, second, rescind second reading, two, motion to amend, three, second reading as amended.
Do we need to do a public hearing then? No, we have to do a public hearing.
Yeah.
No, I don't think so.
Staff?
It's my underst, so my understanding is that if we, if council decides to rescind third reading, make a motion to amend the bylaw, and then give another third reading as amended, no public hearing is required.
So we're second reading as amended.
So for the seven point five, bylaw fifteen sixty-four?
No, no. No, no, no. Yeah, fifteen sixty-four. Pardon me, yes, we are. Oh, sorry, my mistake. I'm on, I dropped to one, to seven six. Okay, seven five, fifteen sixty-four. Rescind third, motion to amend, three, and third reading as amended. So third reading as amended is where we at, folks. Correct. Give it to me.
So moved.
Second.
We have a mover and second?
Yes.
All those in favor? Opposed. Now moving to seven point six. Bylaw number one five nine zero, rescind second reading, then motion to amend, and then second reading as amended.
Move to rescind, second reading.
Second.
All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carried.
Move to second reading? Is that what I'm doing? Oh, motion to amend. Motion to amend.
As the report.
Second.
Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Oops, pardon me.
I'm just confused. I'm not able to move quickly enough to get one five nine zero on my table. So one five nine zero is still in regard to Ocean Grove?
No, one five nine zero is.
Oh, the miscellaneous amendments.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. I just was confused where we were.
It was, are we okay then?
Yeah.
Call the question, then. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. Looking for then second reading as amended.
So moved. I win.
Gordy will be seconder. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. Bylaw number one five nine one, first, second, and third readings, Colwood Main Sewer Local Area Service Bylaw Establishment and Loan, bylaw number five nine eight, two thousand and one, amendment number thirty-five.
Move introduction.
All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carried.
Move second.
Discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries.
Move third.
Second, third.
All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. Bylaw number one five eight eight, first, second, third readings for Colwood Main Sewer Local Area Service Bylaw Establishment and Loan Authorization, five nine eight, two thousand and one, amendment number thirty-four.
Move introduction.
Second.
All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carried.
Second.
All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carried.
Second.
All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. Seven point nine, bylaw number one five eight nine, first, second, and third readings, Colwood South Sewer Local Area Service Establishment and Loan, bylaw six oh two, two thousand and one, amendment number three.
Move introduction.
Second.
All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries.
Move second.
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. Third?
Move third.
Second, third.
All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. Seven point one zero, bylaw number one five nine two, first, second, and third.
Move introduction.
Second.
All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carried.
Move second.
Second, second.
Discussion? Counselor Day?
Just a question. I believe this is Dunsborough Middle School being added to the sewer local area service. And I was curious as to how the school districts pay their sewer bills. I wondered if.
Excuse me.
Is that, is that for?
Don't write that down. Just yelling. You don't need to write that down.
Do we have an answer on that one? Andrew, it's probably you that I'm pestering.
I'm just wondering how school, the school will pay for their sewer services.
So the sewer, the school, let's try that again. The school will pay for sewer user fees, and they will be invoiced for that. I did consult with a lawyer, and I had a very quick opinion from her just prior to the meeting this evening. And basically, at this point in her reading of the community charter, they do not pay for parcel taxes.
So they will pay the fees only, but they will not pay the taxes to supply sewer services? So they pay for the upkeep of the sewers, but they pay nothing towards the capital costs of the sewers?
That was her initial reading of the community charter, which basically says, as you know, school districts, as a government entity, do not pay property taxes, and therefore that the parcel taxes were on the same top.
But they, it's my understanding that they do pay utilities like B C Hydro and water services.
That's correct.
And I believe they do pay some development cost charges.
Yes.
So until there's some sort of an agreement where they actually pay for the sewer infrastructure that they're using, I won't be supporting the school to put on the sewers.
You're against schools? Jeez.
I'm against anybody not paying their bills.
Anyone, staff?
They will be paying, in one sense, for the capacity on the sewers, because they'll pay the sewer capacity enhancement fee. That's a fee, not a tax. It's not what everybody, you know, everybody else pays that fee plus the taxes. They will just pay the fee. So that's the fee, which for a single-family dwelling would be three thousand two hundred and fifty, I believe, for a single-family dwelling, so it'll be considerably more for a school.
And when sewage treatment comes on board, will they be paying for that?
Again, they'll pay fees, but not taxes.
Call the question, all those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. So that was that second, so third reading, please.
Move third.
Second.
All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Motion to move in camera?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. Folks, thank you very much for those who stuck it out to the end.